Welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District's Board of Education Regular Meeting for Wednesday, February 10th, 2016. Has this meeting been properly noticed, Mrs. Combs? Can you call a roll, please?
Dito?
Here.
Eliasen?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Prasok?
Here.
Neverher?
Here.
Homestead?
Here.
Today for Pledge of Allegiance were being led by Smith Elementary School, Brianna Bogey and Kyle Wolf.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys can stay if you want, or you can leave.
It's every mother's dream, so.
Thank you.
You want me to stand?
Yeah, probably up there. And they each will screen at the same time, and then I'll do the names.
Check over there, will you?
I think go over there now.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Well, this evening, we are really, we are so pleased when we have an overcrowded boardroom. And we apologize, we just don't have enough chairs. And normally, we have two people in the audience, and so we're not used to having a wonderful group. But we are so pleased this evening to honor our presentation of our Elementary School Arts Awards. And one of the things, in addition to all of your artwork being displayed in the hallways, we'll be flashing your name and your art project up on the screen. And our Board President, Steve Dito, will be handing you a certificate of recognition. I have carefully reviewed the names, but I'm certain that even with some phonics for names, I may mispronounce them, and I apologize in advance for that. But I'll try my very best to make sure that I have an understandable name for each of you. So with that, we'll start. Isaiah Finley. Is Isaiah here? Yes. Evan Naggs. Now Evan here, too. Okay. Katie Hilt. Abby O'Brien. Landon Brewer. Olivia Martin. Isabel Tibbetts. Emma Chiswinski. Jed Elleboe. Lindsay Robel. Andrea Miller. Evelyn Fuller. Felicia Congolee Roll. Brandy Root. Alicia Bina Beni. Rihanna Wilson. Dasha Everencamp. Addison Renning. Austin Albrecht. Maya Robinson. Sage Roots. Lea Shehe. Faith Lanza. Seiya Kong. Ryan Jensen. Gabriella Trinrud. Camden Ames. Tuli Bang. Sawyer Kruger. Kingston Johnson. Jolie Bang. Madison Forst. And Lily M. That completes our list, and congratulations to all our wonderful elementary art students. Thank you so very much. I'm sure you want to sit down for my education report?
You guys don't want to stay?
Especially on the financial audit.
It gets better.
Or if we need to move my con closer now, I appreciate it.
I know.
All right, at this time, we have Board Administrative Reports. I'd like to start with student representatives, please.
All right, so, starting with Oshkosh West. So winter sports are starting to come to an end. Most sports are moving into their championship portion of their season within the next few weeks. Our gymnastics team is doing really well this season. Next weekend, they have their conference meet, followed by sectionals, and then the state meet, which two girls are expected to qualify for. The boys' basketball team has won their last two games and lost an extremely close game to the 10th overall-ranked team in the state. The last big Northwest game will take place tomorrow night. Girls' basketball has three more regular-season games left until playoffs. They have won the last two games, and the team is working very well together. Their senior night was last night, and their regionals game starts on February 26. The boys' swim team has competed in their conference meet over the weekend and did fantastic. They had one first-place finish, five second-place finishes, and one third-place finish, which brought them to a third-place finish overall. The sectional meet is this weekend at NINA High School, which will determine who qualifies for the state competition February 20th in Madison. Some other activities that have happened in the past month. So the snow blast competition has started this week, which is a super fun way for high schoolers to get involved at West. Students have put together groups of 10 students and one teacher, and over the course of this week, participate in dress-up days, mini-games, and competitions over the lunch hour. Mock Trials has their regional competition this Saturday, the 13th, at the Appleton Courthouse. They get to compete in a real courtroom setting to present a court case with witnesses and attorneys. They have two teams, and have been competing in scrimmages all season. And FBLA had a competition last weekend where students competed in a category of their choosing by giving a presentation, speech, or taking a test. There were four students from West that qualified for the state FBLA competition, which will take place in April in La Crosse. And finally, Oshkosh West presented the musical Beauty and the Beast two weekends ago, and the show was actually a really huge hit. We had over 2,000 people in attendance over the course of four shows and sold 1,000 tickets on Sunday alone. So in the next video, I have a short clip from our performance of "Be Our Guest," which is one of the biggest ensemble numbers from it.
No sound.
Oh, it's not in mine.
Music! As the night unfolds, it is as deep as private, and it's special, as we welcome to tonight. Hey now, we're making sure we're relaxed, that is full of a chair, and designing a groggy business. Yo, see? I'm a guest, I'm a guest, put on service to the test. Tie on that gear, or your neck's shelly, and we're to revive it. So to show, I told you, so why we all live to serve, tries the great stuff.
It's delicious.
What's on your knee, and the dishes, they can see it's even bad, after all, this is strong, and it ain't even no second best. Go on and hope your day, break a glass and say, yo, we are guests, we are guests, we are guests. Back to the place, like, we all are made, we're prepared, so they are good, they're ready, come ready, you're all going to stare, the place is open, hey? Don't move me, or I'm beating once, let us defeat you. I am straight, with my feeling, I'm sick, and it's all in the riches that you demand. Come on and split your glass, you want your own free pass, we are guests, if you're stressed, it's fine, I can suggest, we are guests, we are guests, we are guests. We are guests, we are guests, it's your world, it's your life, it's important, you're a chick, you're ready, it's just like a baby, it's like a seal, I'm like a rooster. We're ready, I don't know, maybe we are, I'm ready, see, you're born, it's a gift, what's it named, thank you, I want anyone, need to be on the burn, believe you should have a heart, and set this up, you know, so we are guests, we are guests, we are guests.
Thanks. So that was just a short clip from the show. And finally, we have our upcoming events here at West. So the long-awaited homecoming to dance will take place this weekend, February 13th, as the grand finale of Snow Blast Week. Orchestra has their Pops Concert February 18th at 7:30 PM at Alberta Kimball Auditorium. This is a conjoint concert with North that features popular rock music and famous music from movies. Juniors have their ACT testing March 1st and 2nd at West. The Band Choir and Orchestra District Solo Ensemble will take place March 5th at Fond du Lac High School. This is an event that music students have been preparing for since late January. And finally, the All-City Orchestra Concert is March 18th at 6:30 PM at the Alberta Kimball Auditorium. The middle and elementary school strings programs have the opportunity to come together with the high schoolers on this night to perform individual pieces and a large piece that includes every orchestra. So also, just as a quick heads up, I'm unable to attend the next Board Meetings next month, so Tess Seering, our Vice President, is going to be taking my place to give the presentation. So that is all. Thank you.
Thanks.
So a lot's been going on at North this past month. Just this past weekend, our Forensics Team took first place in their competition at Winnicott High School in the Medium Division, and they also won the Most Spirited Award, which is an award that is given out every year and has been since, I think, the '80s. Thirteen students worked very hard to prepare for this meet and were very excited about both of their wins. Forensics also held their first meet on January 23rd, and it was the first meet that they had held at Oshkosh North in the past 14 years. Twenty-five teams competed at this meet, and it was the biggest meet so far this season, and everything went very smoothly. This weekend, they will be competing in Hortonville, so we're wishing them luck. Our sports update, our boys' swim finished fifth at their conference meet and are preparing for sectionals this Saturday at NINA. Boys' hockey recently finished fifth at the Badgerland Tournament and received seventh seed, and they host Green Bay United on Tuesday, February 16th, at 7:30 PM at the 20th Y. Girls' basketball is currently in sixth place in the FVA with a 7-8 record and hosts Oshkosh West on Friday. Wrestling placed sixth at the FVA Tourney last Saturday and combined with their 7-2 FVA dual-meet record and tied for third overall in the FVA with NINA. Boys' basketball is currently tied for third place in the FVA with an 8-4 record and hosts Oshkosh West on this Thursday. Some upcoming events at North. This weekend, we have North's musical, The Sound of Music. It starts Thursday, the 11th, through Sunday, February 14th. The Thursday-through-Saturday performances are at 7:00 PM, and the Sunday performances are at 2:00 PM at the Grand Opera House. And tonight, we do have some special guests here to perform for us. We also have our annual Sasquatch Days, next week, February 15th through the 19th, followed by the dance on February 20th. February 18th, there's the Northwest Midwinter Pop Concerts at Alberta Kimball Auditorium at 7:30 PM. And February 25th is our Winter Band Concert at 8:00 PM in North's Auditorium. And then tonight, we have performing for us Izzy Eliasen and Dylan Ford singing "16 Going on 17," and Logan Peterson and Zoe Coath singing "Edelweiss."
The only one I worry about is his daughter.
Me? Why?
Liesl, how old are you?
I'm 16. Well, what's wrong with that?
You're a wiser girl, on an empty stage, for fate to turn the light on. Your life, little girl, is an empty page, that man will want to ride on.
To ride on.
You are 16, going on 17, baby, it's time to think. Better beware, be canny and careful, baby, you're on the brink. You are 16, going on 17, fellows will fall in line. Young lads and reways and cats will offer you food and wine. Totally unprepared are you, to face a world of men. Timid and shy and scared are you, of things beyond your ken. You need someone older and wiser, telling you what to do. I am 17, going on 18, I'll take care of you.
I am 16, going on 17, I know that I'm naive. Fellows I meet may tell me I'm sweet, and willingly I believe. I am 16, going on 17, innocent as a rose. Bachelor dandies, drinkers of brandies, what do I know of those? Totally unprepared am I, to face a world of men. Timid and shy and scared am I, of things beyond my ken. I need someone older and wiser, telling me what to do. You are 17, going on 18, I'll depend on you.
Small and white, clean and bright, you look happy to meet me. Blossom of snow, may you bloom and grow, bloom and grow forever. Edelweiss, Edelweiss, bless my homeland forever. Edelweiss, Edelweiss, every morning you greet me. Small and white, clean and bright, you look happy to meet me. Blossom of snow, may you bloom and grow, bloom and grow forever. Edelweiss, Edelweiss, bless my homeland forever.
Nice job, guys.
Thank you.
We should do that every week. Different genre every week.
Do some other previews and...
Nice job.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on with our other Board Administrative Reports Superintendent's Report.
Boy, this is really downhill from... Sorry about that, but we do have some wonderful things to report on, on all the activities going on in the Oshkosh Area School District right now. First of all, as a part of the Oshkosh Area School District's People's Services Strategic Plan, the Oshkosh Area School District recently partnered with the community to facilitate a youth mental health first-day training, which involved eight hours of training for over 100 people to serve as, who serve or are around teens. This training brought together coaches, teachers, principals, parents, youth ministers, staff, and community agencies such as the Boys and Girls Club, the Christine Anne Center, the Oshkosh Police Department, to learn some basics of mental health and how to support teens, and most needed. Christian preschool children have had the opportunity to do at least 10 minutes of yoga each week as a support for children who struggle with, struggle to work independently. South Park Teen Work Students worked for a week as pastry chefs to decorate cakes, which were then judged on different categories, such as the most creative, best use of decorating techniques, and best overall appearance. The pastry chefs experienced, encouraged students to use skills that are taught as part of Teen Week, and how important positive work behavior and personal qualities are to being employable in the future. The South Park PTN hosted the Second Annual Friday Night Frenzy, where families could come together and enjoy an evening with open gym, dancing, playing board games, using a photo booth, and participating in raffles. All just had a great time. South Park also reported, Learning and Innovation Cooperation, SPLIC, is up and running. The students are enjoying the benefit of $10,000 technology grant received from the Robie family last year. The school is working on, in an area that will house its new green-screen 3D printer, purchased with the grant money. They've also created a student technology club, and that club is very busy with creating a matrix and housing expected behaviors in that new space. More good news from South Park. Thank you to two South Park food service people who planned a Super Bowl party for the South Park students, which was held during their lunch hour last week. Thursday, the cafeteria was decorated with football, football music played in the background, and students received some great prizes that they were provided by community businesses. The South Park Social Skills Committee focused on respect for a month in February. The month of February, the South Park staff wore the Panther Way t-shirts and did a flash mob presentation for students of Aretha Franklin's song, "Respect," R-E-S-P-E-C-T, as a part of the Teaching the Panther Way, and respect was responsible and being safe. From Franklin Elementary, the second-grade students at Franklin recently participated in a water safety program where they learned swimming skills as well as safety skills for use while in and around the water. Franklin 5th graders, a grade student council, held a school-wide fundraiser where they raised $325 to support kids with cancer. raised $325 to support kids with cancer. For a $1 donation, students were allowed to wear their pajamas to school all day. At fifth grade at Franklin, students organized a school-wide activity where students created holiday cards for veterans. At the King Veterans Home, students from the fifth grade were able to visit the home and sing carols for the veterans, and they delivered the cards too. Franklin students learned valuable lessons about service and giving and helping others in need during December, and they collected some $608.64 for the Leukemia Lymphoma Society. Students used the, their own allowances and did extra chores to create that donation. The Franklin, Franklin School donated the most and was treated to a Olive Garden lunch. Wow. Tipler students recently participated and visited UWO O'Clare's Fifth Element as sixth member, all-male a cappella group who promotes music in schools, and a lifetime student involved in music. They performed for students, provided a lesson in a cappella music, and taught students part of a song that they could sing as a group. Oshkosh North and West students joined Lurds students at the annual Innovation Career Conference and Career Scavenger Hunt hosted by several area businesses, which was held in conjunction with the Chambers Business Expo a few weeks ago. Students learned about IT, engineering, STEM careers, and heard from author Chris Sardik, who worked on teams to develop their creativity, team-building skills, and heard stories about career paths from young engineering professionals, and they also participated in a scavenger hunt. Oshkosh North and West volleyball teams hosted the Eighth Annual Dig for the Cure Fox Valley Volleyball Tournament where they raised some $13,000. The funds were presented to Lynn Kleiman from Mercy Medical Center for construction of a unique wig boutique within the facility to help patients who are experiencing hair loss due to cancer treatment. Great job. Congratulations to four Oshkosh North students for creative writing students who were published in February 2016 edition of Teen Link, an international publication that reaches millions of teens nationwide, nationwide. Ten students this year all, have also, also been published. Check out that work by clicking online on this. And just a reminder that we post all the superintendent's good news so that if you want to retrieve something, it's always available on, on our website. Congratulations to ALPs, the ALP's fourth and fifth grade students who recently graduated from the DARE program. Thanks for all who helped have this happen. The ALP's fourth and fifth grade students, ALPS students traveled to the Davis Childcare to share their stories and written, written in Spanish for the students there. Congratulations to Oshkosh North seniors Jacob Juttering and Murphy Osmond for recently signing national letters of intent to play football at, at two universities. Roosevelt Elementary School students recently held its January Family Night where families enjoyed an evening of learning and some delicious soup, and thank you to businesses who helped create this wonderful meal for the families. And Lakeside Elementary staff created two teams to compete at the Oshkosh area school district foundation trivia night last week. While neither team won, they showed their spirit and through Mardi Gras and Hawaiian costume themes. I even received a lay from one of them to, to wear through part of the night. This is the second year the Lakeside has accomplished, has, has been, Lakeside has implemented PBIS, and as a reward, 96% of the students have zero or one office discipline referrals, modeling the positive behavior and being respectful, responsible, and safe. Lakeside students traveled to the YMCA where they were able to swim, ice skate, and join many other activities. The Oshkosh Co-op Voice Hockey Program recently raised $5,000 for the Vince Lombardi Cancer Clinic during their Fight Cancer Week game on January 23rd. Thank you to all who participated and donated to such a, a great cause. Webster Stanley Elementary students created Valentine Cards for veterans who live in the Veterans Home in King, Wisconsin, and to thank them for their service and dedication and the freedoms that we now enjoy because of them. And the Tipler Girls Basketball Team held their Fourth Annual Spaghetti Dinner before their first game of the season, a tradition started by their coaches as a team bonding activity. Thank you to all who donated food and did the cooking and baking for the group, and then listed our, all the varying activities that I have spent in the last two weeks. With that completes, Mr. President, the superintendent's report for this, this two-week period.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Are there any other reports from community chairs?
The Education Committee met on Thursday, February 4th, and the first item on our agenda was a presentation by the Lego League for a Milk Carton Recycling Fundraiser. But it really is more than just a presentation, they did a very well researched and professionally presented business plan idea. And all good business plans require a few basic ideas. They have to identify a problem, they propose a solution, and then they'll tell you what the benefits would be from solving that problem. And what the Lego League found or identified was that there's a lot of milk drunk in, in public schools, and all that milk comes in a little tiny milk carton. And they were problem-solving, if they could recycle those milk cartons, it could possibly lead into some good things. So they invested that, they invested, getting ahead of myself, they researched that, and they found out that there is close to 20 tons of milk carton and paper scraps thrown out each year. And if they could recycle that and bail it and sell it back to the res, the, the resellers, they could get an annual return of almost $8,000 with that. And the Education Committee recognized that there were many educational benefits to this project and recommended they proceed with this plan in the next step, which is a presentation before the Finance and Facilities Committee. And as a side note, they're also getting a little education how the political process works, because it's, all these things have to work through their respective committees. The next item was a presentation on the Elementary School Counseling Scope and Sequence. Basically, what we were doing is that we were kind of tweaking and updating the sequence to more fall in line with the Association of School Counselors, American Association of School Counselors, ASCA, American School Counselors Association. The last agenda items was, or report on changing some agriculture classes over to a science equivalent credit, and the update on the high school graduation requirements, because now students will take three credits of science for graduation. And the, if we would make some of those agricultural science classes into science equivalent credits, it'd give the students a little more option of what they want to do, and we submitted five classes to the DPI for their approval to count as science classes also. And that about wraps it up.
Thanks, Dan. Any other committee chairs? With that, it looks like we move into our first workshop. Results of the 2015 Audit. Dave Macau from Shankton Associate.
Okay, good evening. The audit report was presented to the committee last month, so I'll just say some of the highlights, and certainly if anyone has any questions, feel free to interrupt me. But the financial report of the district is a representation of the financial activities that occurred for the year ended December 31st, or December, or June 30th, excuse me. And there's a couple of things I want to point out. First is the opinion on the financial statements, which starts on page one. A very important document. What that means is we go through the financial statements that is really maintained by the district each, each year in issuing opinions. So if we turn to page two, top of the line, first paragraph, we issued an unmodified report, and that means that the district's financial records are maintained in accordance with the appropriate requirements, and that they were accurately prepared so that we could prepare the report. So very good statement of the financial condition of the records of the district. Starting on page four is a management discussion analysis. I would encourage the board to review that. It goes through a number of key things that what happened in 2015 and how that compares to the prior year, and it is well done, so I'd encourage you to take a look at it. Then if we turn to page 10, just want to touch a little bit on the government-wide financial statements, and why I like to touch on that, is it really reflects somewhat the financial assets and activities that the district is managing. In addition to a lot of the funds, you have a number of various different assets, capital assets, buildings that you're also maintaining. So when we look at 2015, you can see that your total assets approximate about $147 million. That's on a historical cost basis, but it reflects assets that are either liquid in the form of cash or invested in the infrastructure in which you provide services to the students here at the district. So it's always important to reflect your total assets that you're managing. Now, there is one criteria or category that's a little bit different, and I'll just touch on it just because it is different, but that net pension asset, you can see that it's about 9.9 million. That is primarily the Wisconsin retirement system and a new standard that was implemented in fiscal year 2015. What that does is it reflects that the system as a whole is, the funding or the investments that the system have exceed the obligations currently at the end of 2014. So it's a very accurate reflection of the fact that the Wisconsin retirement system in which your employees receive pension benefits is well-funded and continues to be well-funded and capable of making future payments to the retirees within the system. So it is shown as an asset because of that, because you are participating with multiple other employers in governments, but it is a positive reflection on the financial position of the system as a whole. When we look at the liabilities, you can see the liabilities are about $110 million. That reflects both general obligation debt, where you issue debt for buildings or various different infrastructure. It also includes your OPEB liability as it gets amortized in, so you can kind of see the liabilities. But the last category is really the most important, is your net position, and it really reflects how you did from last year to this year. Major change, you can see it did go up, but the major change once again is the impact of the pension benefits related to the Wisconsin retirement system. So overall, you have about a net ownership of about $45.6 million. Any questions on that? Then if we look at page 11 and 12, this measures a period of time, and you can see very positive results in the current period. What that reflects is that the district is reinvesting in the buildings. We saw on the prior page, your net investment of buildings went up in, in infrastructure, so it's a very positive statement that you're reinvesting in what you have to maintain. It also reflects the activities. So you can see a slight decrease in your overall net position on an operating basis. That is primarily the, due to the OPEB and the amortization of the OPEB liability. From a perspective, overall, your financial health has increased with respect to the operations, so. Any questions on that? And then finally, I'll just comment a little briefly on the fund, financial statements that start on page 13. Like I said, this is going, we went through this in more detail at the committee level, but very positive results in 2015. You can see that your total fund balances are about $31 million. Some of that relates to the capital projects and bonding as you reinvest in some of those infrastructure within. But you can see your general fund is currently sitting at about $16.5 million, which is a fairly nice fund balance. It is down a little bit, but that was primarily, if you remember during the year, you did transfer some money into our long-term capital. So it was a planned decrease of fund balance. So the budget anticipated about a $2.9 million decrease in your general fund because of budgetary pop, budgetary variances that were positive. Your decrease was only 2.2, and, and some of that decrease actually was a transfer into your capital fund, so, for future capital. Any questions on that? And the only other thing I would like to kind of point out is, as part of our audit, we also look at the compliance. The district receives a lot of federal and state financial assistance. In federal assistance, you receive about $8 million, much of which is passed through from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, and then you received about $61 million of state funding. So our audit looks at not only the balance sheet that we just talked about, the activities, but we also look at your compliance with appropriate laws and regulations. Are you spending the funds appropriately and following the appropriate federal and state guidelines? We're pleased to say that we had no findings with respect to any of the federal programs that we tested, which is a very positive statement on the controls within the district. With respect to the overall financials, we had no, what we call management letter comments on significant deficiencies or deficiencies. We did issue an informational comment just on new standards that are out there, but from our perspective, the district was well-prepared as we entered the audit. What's important is we work with multiple different levels. We work obviously with the business office and the various different people, but, you know, we work a lot closely with the grant individuals, or we work with the people activity funds and the funds being managed, and we certainly wanted to appreciate all the support we've received from everyone here at the district in completing the audit. It was a very efficient audit from our perspective, and we do appreciate the district's employees' work in completing this effort. So with that, I'll entertain any questions anyone may have.
I don't have any questions.
I like that we decided to have you come tonight, mostly because we just finished a survey with the community, and we asked the community to grade us on our financial, how we... Sorry? Responsibilities. And, and we didn't get such a high grade, and so we thought, okay, we better tell everybody how well we do. So thank you for coming. Thank you for helping us spread the word. Because we are in compliance, we're doing a great job, we're funding all of our liabilities, you know, and, and so we're, we're good fiduciaries of taxpayer dollars, so thank you.
Sure.
I would just like to add that this report this evening is reflective of each of the previous reports we've had in the last several years, although we did not have a public exhibition of them. But the pattern continues, but, but that's compliments to the outstanding work of our Business Services Department that provide outstanding oversight, and frankly, for all of our administrators who comply with the direction they receive to make sure that we stay in compliant. That's, that's a critical issue, and decisions made after board authorization through Finance and Facilities or from all of our budget are then implemented, and frankly, then we are in the position that our administrators need to comply with both the operational standards or the intent of each of those, those financial actions, and we're grateful for that. But I particularly would like to thank Sue Schnorr and the efforts of all of those she supervises, because we stay compliant, because we run a good operation, compliant with state and federal laws as well as good accounting practices. And that's really, to me, I sleep well at night because we do that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like our next workshop is going to be led by Mike Nault on staffing comparables.
Good evening. I think it was last board's meeting, last, the last board meeting that one of the board members requested that we look at our instructional support staff and, and determine whether we are, as I would say, in the hunt with those, with other school districts, or we are an outlier, so to speak. So we've done that, and what we've done here is, is if you look at the left-hand side, we consider those to be our comparables, without, with the exception of Kimberly and Manasha. We threw those, we threw those two school districts into the mix because they're, they're right next door, and we wanted Nina, Kimberly, Manasha, Fond du Lac, Green Bay, those school districts that are kind of sister districts right around us. The next number there, Instructional Support, reflects... The next number there, instructional support, reflects the amount of money each school district spends on instructional support per pupil expenditure. So the middle column there, where if we have La Crosse, 922, but we go over to 13, 537, that's how much La Crosse spends on each student, the 13,000, 537. The 922 is exactly how much they spend out of that 13, 537 on instructional support. And of course, the far-right column is the percent per pupil that is spent on instructional support. Now, what I also want you to know is that the Taxpayers Alliance publication, that's where all this information came from, defines instructional support in order to have apples comparing to apples. And they define it as curriculum support, media specialist, computer-assisted technology, probably technology integration specialist, and staff development people. So when you look at this, then, you'll see that we spend about 3.4% of the 10,000, 834 that we spend on each student for instructional support. And this was back in 910. So we'll push it forward to 1011, and everything is there. We spend about 3.6% in 1011. 1112, we spent, what, about 3.8%? Slight increase. 1213, we're down to 3.6. And 1314, we're at 3.6 still. And the Taxpayers Alliance publication goes up to the 1314 school year. This little chart just demonstrates that, if you look at the far-right quick example, it just shows we're 34, 36, 38, 36, 36. So, you know, we've been pretty consistent over those five years. This chart demonstrates basically what my HR colleagues got back to me, you know? So as I put it out to them, because I was kind of wondering, okay, how are we looking in 1516? How are we looking today relative to our comparables out there? So I shot an email out to my HR colleagues, and this is what I received back. And what I asked for, what I asked for is in the left-hand corner at the bottom, I asked for curriculum support, instructional support, library media specialist, literacy coaches, and then technology integration coaches. And basically, this is what they returned to me. So when you look at this, you look at the top three schools with enrollments over 10,000, you know, everybody's in the low 40s there, fairly consistent. And then you look at, in my opinion, Wasa is kind of an outlier there, because then when you look at the student enrollments from 8,000 down to actually 6,000, they're all basically in the high, high 20s or low 30s, pretty consistent. And then, of course, you get down to Kimberly, which is, you know, half our enrollment, and they're down about 16. So this chart here basically shows that for all the 421, I think, 422 school districts in the state of Wisconsin, and it's pretty faded or pretty hard to see, but the arrow there demonstrates where the Oshkosh school district is, and this, I believe, was 1314 school year. And then this chart basically shows that of the 40 largest school districts in the state of Wisconsin, 40 largest, we're right there by the red. And so the 40 largest kind of demonstrates we're in probably the lower quartile right there. So, yeah. So just to try to give you some information on that. Any questions, any thoughts?
I appreciate your ability to pull this together in a relatively short time period, presenting accurate data and doing it in chart-like formats, which I find very helpful. I find that very easy to read as compared to trying to weed out things in a narrative. So I appreciate your efforts on this. I had a chance to chat briefly late this afternoon with Mr. Nault about this. I think in keeping with a couple of concepts, one that boards should be looking at, big picture. And so I think it's important that we look at other data on other groups of employees. For example, how have the number of people in administrative roles, in teacher roles, paraprofessionals, food service, custodial, secretarial...
Maintenance.
Maintenance changed over a five-year period, because that would show us trends. And I think that's important as we, as a board, seek to make data-driven decisions, which would be consistent with our previous strategic plan, I think it was under goal two, that the board would be given comprehensive information on which to make database decisions. And so I think having that information is good from a number of standpoints. It helps this board have a better handle on things overall. Maybe the last one or two board meetings, we've been asked to add some positions. And sometimes I feel like I can't see the forest for the trees because I don't know what two positions here or there mean in the whole big picture. So I think it would be helpful to communicate with the board as well as with the public. We learned, for example, from the Springstead survey, that while we think information is out in the public, or we know certain things, that's not always the case. So I think, as Mrs. Garner pointed out so well, with the previous workshop, it's important to get information out to the public about what good things are going on in the school district. So I would just, I think that data would be important to the board as we move forward.
Anything else? Sure? Anything else?
I like that Wisconsin Taxpayer Alliance booklet. I started looking at that roughly in 2010 and kind of keep up on it. It does have really good comparables when you look at different districts, especially, doesn't even have to be, you can get a feel for regardless of the amount of children that are in a district, you can still see an average, how many support specialists do we have comparative to our educational people? And you can kind of feel where we're at in regards to that. You can see also the wages and the benefits and longevity and all the other things that are in there. It's a heck of a decent document.
It is very good publication.
It was a delight to be able to find five, six years in a row of that data to turn over to Mike and say, I think we've got a way of retrieving this. And it's far more difficult at any time of the year. It's busy for people in Mike's position, and then Mike is bugging them about their data and when we can get the data objectively out of manuals that have been provided by... And it probably, I know for sure that accuracy is enhanced because much of their data that comes out of the Taxpayer Alliance really is downloading from DPI, and they summarize it in great format. So I would like to especially say thank you to Mike, who undertook this task with diligence and gusto, and we talked continuously through the process. But when I reached the conclusion that I think there's an easier way to retrieve it by using those historical documents of five, six years' worth of the books, it made the whole thing take off far easier.
It did. No doubt about it. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Last workshop of the evening, Budget Reconciliation Committee Recommendations. Mr. Mack?
Yes, we, well, initially, I think we're going to have much of the executive team there, and they're going to begin by introducing, actually, several members of our committee who are going to comment on their experience. We're not going to ask the budget reconciliation team members to report on it. That would be inhumane treatment of volunteers. But if we have at least four members who worked through the nights we had here in the audience, if they'd like to step to the microphone to comment about the experience, John and Brenna and...
If you guys want to just come over and share a bit about your story.
Share your story and experience, so...
One of the things we promised them is they would not have to go through the list. I got dubious honor of drawing that straw. So all we really wanted them to share with you was a little bit about the process they went through and the challenges of that process.
Introduce yourselves and then share your thoughts on it. We really appreciate your dedication.
Well, good evening. My name is Jose Martinez, and I live here in Oshkosh. Been a resident of Oshkosh for 18 years now. And we'd like you guys to introduce yourself first and then share comments.
Go ahead.
Okay. A couple of comments that I would like to share with you. First of all, thank you for the invitation to be part of this. I didn't realize that this has been a third go-around. And when we first started with this process, I made a comment to Stan that it's very heartfelt when you go through this process, because, you know, managing programs myself, I've also gone through the process when we had the recession, and we had to cut back on employees. You know, going through the process is never an easy task, because, you know, always in the back of my mind, I'm always thinking about who's going to be impacted. And when you're in the service industry, obviously, the first thing you think about is the families and the children. In the service industry that you're at, you're looking at education, and you're looking at the quality of education that gets impacted as well. And the second thing that my, at least my reflection was, not only are you looking at families and children, but then you're looking at staff and personnel. You know, what I hold dear to my heart in many instances when I'm had to, and I went through this process myself many times, and having to reduce quite a few dollars, is the qualified, experienced staff that you're going to lose in the process, and it's terrible. And the process in terms of when we had to select, you know, they gave us the opportunity to go through this brainstorming session, say, what other things do you think of? And I'd like to thank the team. They provided wonderful information. For me, it was very educational. I didn't realize, there's a lot of things, for me, was we call the light at the end of the tunnel, that there's quite a few things that happened in Oshkosh many, many years ago, 20 years or 25 years ago, that obviously, we're now feeling the impact. And the impact is that there is a shortfall of revenue. And no one created it, it was created. And the obvious is sometimes when we try to be very good stewards, you mentioned being good stewards of your funds. You know, the prior administrations many years ago were good stewards of their funds, but unfortunately, it was that two-edged sword that created that impact. And so therefore, going through the process and looking at each of these line items and making some decisions in terms of what should we cut, how should we cut, and evaluating each one of those elements certainly was very heart-wrenching. At least from my perspective, when I went through it and the end results that came out, you know, a couple of things, at least when I reflected, and I'd been at your shoes at the other end, where people reported back to me and saying, okay, committee, report back to the board and ask us, you know, what's your opinion? There's a couple of things with all earnest that I certainly will ask you to take to heart. Consider each of those recommendations and consider the merits that have been provided to you. It was a very difficult task even getting to that point, you know? When I looked at those myself, I said, my gosh, can't do this, but because it is a process. And then some of those things that I thought should be up there were down here, obviously up, but it's a process. And then we have to agree to this process in terms of how we got there. The other thing that I would ask is, you know, before we do take any action on any of the elements, because one is, we were given a charge to make sure that if anything we took out, you know, one, we can't be, we have to buy by regulations and standards. There are requirements, and I got that. Second, the health and safety aspects of it. But most importantly, sometimes, you know, quality is lost, you know, the quality of service, the caliber of services is lost somewhere in there, because you can't measure that other than the output, the outcomes that are generated as a result of that. So when you do take in consideration any of these and all of these items, you know, and if anything, if there's other measures that we need to consider or other approaches that we need to go after those first. You know, obviously, I believe that there has been discussion about a referendum. It really does make sense. You know, we talk about making Oshkosh strong. We talk about the well-being of the city of Oshkosh, you know? What makes Oshkosh strong is a good, strong system as well, so school system. What's going to attract families to Oshkosh is a quality school system. What's going to attract businesses to Oshkosh is a quality school. So in my part, you know, we have to invest, and sometimes, you know, we have to dig deep, we do some reflection, and we do have to invest in our future. And from my perspective, I said to Stan, you know, whatever we need to do, we need to do something, but once and for all, you know, we need to make sure that we address the hole that we're in. This hole was not created by you, was not created by the prior administration. This hole was created many, many years ago. However, you know, you've taken the stewardship and the responsibility to lead the city of Oshkosh, the school district, then it's time for us to do something, and it's time for us to maybe ensure that we advocate. The other aspect is advocacy at the state level, so that they really understand the impact that has been created. Again, no fault in anything, but there has to be a change. And the change, obviously, it's impacting the city of Oshkosh, and we certainly want to make sure that we do maintain the quality and the caliber of services that are provided. So I do commend the school district for the exceptional services you provide. You know, I'm a prior parent, I have three graduated from high school here in Oshkosh, two graduated from college, and I'm going on to, one going on to med school, and one going on for the PhD. So I am very happy with the city of Oshkosh and the school district. They provided the best quality services. So certainly, thank you for that opportunity. Certainly, I don't want to come back and do this against them as much as I like, and I applaud the efforts, but, you know, certainly, we need to do something differently. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kim Nguyen. I'm the parent of two boys, one at Alps, one at Webster. I've been through this, this is the third time for me on this process, so I feel the pain. I guess I don't really want to say too much about it other than maybe a little bit of the context, the way we came to measuring or ranking the cuts. We definitely, within our group, we valued the direct instruction to kids. We didn't want to see those direct experiences sacrificed any further. And we also wanted to make sure that staff, employees remained foremost, really, because we appreciate their hard work and their expertise, really. So those were the two ways that I know my group evaluated these cuts. So those were the things that were most important to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Ryland. I'm a teacher, I'm a science teacher in this school district, but I'm sitting here because I feel strongly that I have a son in the school district too. I'm a parent in the school district here. So these cuts, I've gone through these meetings before Mr. Mack was here. It's the most unpleasant experiences that I've ever had. I'll be brutally honest with you on that, just because it's, we're dealing with people and we're in a people business, and it's just hard, because I see what a wonderful product that we're putting out. I know several of the school board members here have been in my classroom, I've had several of their students too in my classes, and I'm very proud of what we do. I always tell, I tell a quick story that, you know, I went to a Cub game quite a few years ago, and the Brewers actually were there, and they actually won the game. It was surprising, but I stood up to pull for the Brewers. And I was at Wrigley Field, and I looked back, and there was this little boy there, and he looks up at his dad, and he's like, he's just perplexed by it. He's like, why are they not pulling for the Cubs? Doesn't everybody pull for the Cubs? Kind of like that impression. And, you know, and I, how do I relate that back to what we're talking about, is anytime I hear anything about the school district, you know, bad about the district, I think to myself, how can you say something bad? What we're doing, I mean, I welcome anybody that's ever wanted, they can come into my classroom, see what we're doing. I'm very proud of this school district. And when we have to go through and look at these cuts on a regular basis like this, it's just, it's a very painful process. So, you know, anything we can do to help, and I believe in this process. If anybody ever has any questions or anything, they can always contact me too.
Thanks, John.
I'm Brenna Garrison-Bruden, very proud principal at Carl Trager Elementary. This is the second time that I've been part of the budget reconciliation process as part of the team, but as an administrator, I've been through it many times. It's devastating to go through this, year after year after year. Jose said it very well. The health of a school system is a driver of the economic health in the community. And we are at a point where any of these cuts that we make are going to have an impact on our community, and we don't want to see that happen. So I really couldn't have said it better than Jose. He speaks very well to the issue, and I'm hoping that we can solve the problem.
Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you to our three representative volunteers of this incredible committee that we worked with for two nights. It was going to be three, but the snowstorm got to us, and we compressed our work into two evenings. But the respect and dignity and the quality of conversation and the caring approach that all individuals carried on with each other, and we made sure that the working groups represented different backgrounds... represented different backgrounds, both employees, not employees, people in different fields. And we had a real contrast in each of our groups, so that people could really discuss things that they normally would not have a chance to cross paths on. And we are so grateful, and that work, most difficult as it is, this is a process I brought from Minnesota and have been unfortunately using at least 15 times, 18 times in my career, which tells you a lot about school financing. And, but the reality is that this kind of citizen input, I doubt that we might have come up with a product much different than the ones that our citizens came up with, but we all owned it and we all walked through the pain, and you have to walk through that pain in order to reach the conclusion that this is not a good outcome, but we've identified the best priorities we could have that we distributed to you as board members last Friday night. So again, thank you for all your dedicated service, and also for those who are on the committee, who are probably watching tonight, we say thank you to all of them as well. Their dedication and caring to represent the greater community is most appreciated, and I'm very proud of all of you.
Having actually served on one of these committees, I know what you speak of. And so I just, you know, thank you for doing it. First time, thank you for doing it, taking it on a second time, and you guys have done it three times now.
They carry Purple Hearts with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank Ashley, too, for coming to our meeting. She helps us out with our Green Week here, too.
And as our leadership team steps up to the table and as a party to this, the preparation work in this process works well, because we have an outstanding executive team that works so well together in preparing. We spent the snowstorm day going through all the questions that were asked of us the night before, and preparing better answers for anything we could have. And we have such dedicated, this process works because of an outstanding administrative team who works so well together, trying to make sure that we have every question for our citizens answered and our employees. And we're grateful for that, too.
What we wanted to do with you here this evening is, is obviously give the folks who were participants in the committee a chance to talk and tell a little bit about their story. And we could not have said it better. You would have been so proud of all of them. I got, I had the, I would not say the pleasure, but I had the opportunity to bounce between the different rooms as they were going through the different budget cut items. And everyone was being taken so seriously. You can have great confidence in their work. So I just want to say that they did a phenomenal job. What we thought we would do here this evening is now go through sort of just a short version of the presentation that we gave to them, which was a lot of their preliminary data to go in and start having those conversations. And then we'll end it with the actual reduction list. We'll explain a little bit about the methodology we used and how the numbers were actually calculated, and why everything lined up in the order it did. And then lastly, we'll talk about probably some changes you'll see in our recommendations that will come to you in resolution form in two weeks, and why those changes would be recommended. Most of it is just tweaking of numbers and making sure everything, because some of them are on there multiple times, but we'll talk a little bit about that. We went through the guiding principles, and I'll blow by some of these slides, because you know most of these. As far as our focusing on our legal obligations, we told them, to the extent possible, try to minimize the impact on our community-based strategic plan. The one thing that became very clear very quickly is these reductions will, in effect, hobble the strategic plan. Very little, if anything, will actually be able to be accomplished in that if these were to be enacted, because the key underpinnings of all of them get pulled apart. We talked about the need to attract, retain, and develop talent, the impact on enrollment, which you, of course, know very well firsthand. We talked a lot about sustainability and the fact that the cuts needed to be permanent. Why we don't just say, "Well, let's stop spending on maintenance", for example, is because that's just kicking those costs down the road, and we certainly don't want to do that. And then, of course, health and safety being at the forefront as well. We went through the open enrollment history. You've all seen this slide, and you can see that our open enrollment, for those people who would be watching at home, our open enrollment is a situation where a lot of people don't understand that, that in the state of Wisconsin, you can open and roll into other districts. What some people have the perception of that's incorrect, is that if you do that, they just go to those other districts. That's not true. What happens is they do go to the other districts, but they take our tax dollars with them, and the tax dollars from Oshkosh go to fund the surrounding communities. So it's in nobody's interest to have a high open enrollment out. And as you can see, in 1011, 1112, and 1213, our net open enrollment out was growing rather quickly. And we peaked in 1213 at about 132 children who were educated in other communities, who actually lived in Oshkosh. From 1213 to 1314, we dropped significantly, about 30 students to the good, and we stabilized for a couple of years. And then this year, we were pleased to report, we dropped another 30 to the good, which was a very pleasant surprise. On the graph, and if you can see it, we also felt we would put in there what we were doing at the time. And you can see those, at the bottom, we were doing program and budget reductions in 1011, 1112, 1213, and 13 and 14. And then in 1415 and this year, we had a bit of a reprieve. And I think there is no, I do think there is a correlation between the fact that we've stabilized as a district, to the fact that families are now returning to the Oshkosh area school district. So that's a positive story. The strategic plan, you're all aware of, we've talked about that, we recently went through that. The first priority was improving student learning for all. Priority two, improving district communications. Priority three was developing and investing in our quality staff. Four is maintaining and improving our facilities. And priority five is strengthening partnerships and community engagement. We then did a cost analysis, and you saw some of the precursor slides in Mike Nault's workshop regarding instructional support staff. We've polished them up a little bit, and we've added some others in there. This is sort of what we call double-duty work, because we're not only preparing these for you this evening, but we're also preparing them for the referendum information packets. Because the one thing people really are interested in is, not only what is your revenue and understanding that story, but also, okay, what are the cost drivers for your organization that are putting us in the current fiscal predicament we're in? Well, we're going to talk to you about three different things: teacher costs, administrative costs, and focusing on per-student costs. This is the teacher average salary, you saw this graph already, and basically, it's hard for people to read, because there's 400 and some districts on there. There's actually 447 entities that are reported in the taxpayers' line, or this one actually comes straight from the DPI. There's 447 districts, because some of them are broken into pieces, but we are in the 39th percentile, which is slightly below midpoint. But when you take into account our salary and benefits, you see we slide to 22nd percentile. So we're definitely in that first quartile of districts at the bottom, as far as teacher compensation, when you factor in total compensation, that's salary and the benefits. If you look at comparable school districts, you can see there that we are at the bottom of our comparables, and those are the comparables that we use. Sheboygan, Waukesha, West Bend, Fond du Lac, Wasaw, Nina, La Crosse, Janesville, Menasha, Green Bay, Kimberley, Eau Claire, and then you see Oshkosh there at the bottom. If you look at salary and benefit costs, you'll notice, no surprise, we'd still be at the bottom. Here's the comparables once again. We slide a little bit further, because our benefit costs in Oshkosh are lower than the average district, in some cases, far lower. If you look at just CISA 6, that's our CISA, you can see where we are as far as salary there. We're in the 21st percentile, we're ninth out of 42 districts. But if you take a look at the salary and benefits, we are at the bottom of those CISA districts. So I put those up there, just so people could see what CISA districts are. We are, of course, the lowest as Oshkosh, but above us would be Rosendale, Chiottin, Oakfield, Berlin, Markazan, Amro, et cetera, all the way up. So just to give you an idea of where we're sitting. Instructional support costs, you've seen that, we're in the 25th percentile for instructional support. I'll go through that one pretty quick. We're in the 17th percentile as far as our 40 largest school districts, same graph you just saw. As far as our comparable districts, you'll see we're down near the bottom quartile there. Administrative costs, actually, good news is, we are no longer state champs, we are no longer the bottom of the state. We are actually in the third percentile. That's 14th district out of 423 that were reported by the taxpayers' alliance. And if you zoom in on that, and just take a look at the bottom 100 districts, you'll see that, of course, we're in the 14th percentile, because we're 14th from the bottom. And then if you look at our comparables, you'll see we are third from the bottom, if you look at the comparable school districts that are used. So those were essentially the cost drivers for the district, and you can see that we're at or near the bottom in any of the measures that we would use that drive the majority of the costs of our organization. We did come back with the group and look at a lot of the questions that they had from session one. And there's several up there, and I won't read through them all, but they were great questions. A lot of people, you know, how do you, I will just read the first one, "What do you cut from a very frugal budget?" That was really the challenge of the group. They're like, the things that we are looking at reducing, or the things that other districts, I should say, are looking at potentially reducing over the past few years, this district did over 10 years ago. So it's very difficult. You've removed most of that from the system, and now you're really down into some very serious cuts. We also did some group processing with them. We gave them a summary of information on the referendum, some questions that they had, some answers. We just tried to package all of that and get that to them. We provided them with a cut list from 1415, which you, most of you are very familiar with, having gone through that. And then we talked a little bit about the assumptions that were being used in the calculations, the CPI estimate being .12%. The teacher salary advancement would be roughly $700,000. That's for all of them. The per-people revenue limit is being presented as a $0 increase. We believe that's a very, unfortunately, accurate number that we might be receiving from the state. I think it's also important, and the committee members also really understood, that your hands are largely tied as school boards. There was a day where you got to make those decisions. Most of these decisions are out of your hands. Most of these decisions are firmly entrenched in the hands of the legislators in Madison. They are the ones who have set the table for this. We then went through the menu of possible reductions. And what we did is, is we had a scoring method that we wanted them to use, so that they could go ahead and break up into their respective groups. We had different Google Sheets set up, ready to go. And what each group did is, they went through and they scored each item as a team. And then all of those scores flowed into one single Google spreadsheet that did the average. And then we all came back together and looked at the final score and near the end. We, of course, hit the civility ground rules, which was not a problem at all. Everybody was incredibly respectful of everybody else. And it wasn't that they were always agreeing, either. It was just, it was just a very good process. Here was the rubric we used. Basically, a 1 to a 1.99 would be, "We may not like it, but there's little debate for putting that on the list." In other words, lower number means it would be higher on the cut list. A 2 to 2.9 would be in between. A 3 to 3.9 would be, "The idea begins to damage the health and viability of the district. However, the idea, when implemented, can be done to a degree that operations might still be able to be maintained." And then 4 is in the middle. 5 would be, "The team believes this must be preserved in order for the district to remain healthy." And then 6 is, "It really can't be implemented, we'll slide it down for a subsequent year", or "It would be very difficult to implement." Those aren't hard and fast numbers, but that was sort of the general ranking level we wished people to use. And we would then prioritize it. And this is, in effect, the list. Now, what I'm going to do here is, I'm going to go to a different document that we can zoom in on a little bit. So this is actually the reduction list, when sorted from top to bottom. And what we did in there is, we gave them the description. We went through exactly what I'm going to go through with you in just a couple of seconds here. We went through the description, we talked about what the impact was on the employees or on the community. We talked about the amount that is projected to save by reducing that or eliminating that. And then we put the impact in the comment. Now, mind you, there's a lot more to the impact of each of these than we could put in here. When we do go ahead and move to referendum, we will have a much more thorough set of impact statements that will tell the voters exactly what pieces would not be there, so that nobody's going to have any questions about that. So, at the top of the list, no surprise, was sell Riff Road. Nobody objected to that one. That one came in pretty much at the top. The problem with selling Riff Road is its one-time revenue. While it does, is projected to bring in $700,000, that doesn't do really anything long-term for the situation that we're faced with a little bit. So that's a challenge. Next on the list was require all middle school students to take one study hall. This is, this was on the previous list as well, from the previous year. That's projected to save $1.1 million. That would eliminate or restrict access to middle school electives, such as family and consumer science, technology and engineering. Those would be, would most likely be reduced significantly, if not go away. The next one on the list is reduce employee travel by 10%. That was a $25,000 expenditure item. That was an estimate. Mind you, a lot of these reductions are estimates. The next one is eliminate funding for professional development opportunities. Part of that is the funding the board, just a few weeks ago, approved for the professional development of the administrative team and also the teachers, so that would go away right away. The next one would be reduce building budgets by 5%. That's about $43,000. Now, that's one of the impact statements that's probably been least vetted. The problem with that is, is we've already cut that several times, so as you continue to do that, that's going to reduce the resources that would normally typically go into classrooms and educational experiences are going to suffer. They're just not going to have the funds to deal with it.
And it's not really too different than the issue of deferring maintenance, and the fact that if you don't, you're just simply delaying the need, or delaying the investment in what is essential. Because we are at essential in building budgets.
Right. The next one is increase high school music teaching load from four to five sections. That's projected to save approximately $84,000. That eliminates or severely restricts the individual student lessons on their specific instrument, and the quality of the music program would certainly diminish. The next one is increase the amount of teacher subs to 16 periods. Teachers are required to sub eight periods a year already. So what they do is, they give up their prep time and they go in and sub during that hour. They're required to do eight periods, this would raise that to 16 periods. We have on there right now that that would save $60,000. Yes, it would, however, teachers will have less time to work with students during those periods. If you walk in any of our secondary schools and look what teachers are doing during their prep periods, I think you will find them with a group of students somewhere. At least I have, whenever I've gone there. Next one is outsource additional 4K sites that are currently housed in the district. That's about $43,000. That is an incredibly disruptive change for $43,000. But part of the problem with that one is, you need, we need to find a community space to have this happen, and it's just going to be a real shuffling.
Early childhood right now is connected to the 4K programs in our own sites, so now we would also have to find programs that, or sites that would also want early childhood.
I was going to write that estimate on that one, because I'm, I don't know if I calculated that right. So when you get the final list, that might be, it has to be adjusted a little bit.
And you'll find a lot of this is, that statement you made, "We just fixed it", you're right. Almost every one of these, you kind of look at it and go, "We just fixed that. We just, we're doing some really great stuff here." And to turn around and go back the other direction, hence the recommendation to go to referendum. The next one is close one of our five middle schools. That's projected to save about $350,000. We'd have larger middle schools, it would require some boundary adjustments for the middle school level. The next one is reduce a district administrator, somebody at central office. That one, we're going to be adjusting the number up a little bit right now. That'll be a little bit higher. Basically, what that means is, something in the area of assessment coordination, district points, supervision of instructional tech, expulsion or student discipline, or district communications may be passed out to building principals. So some, because somebody won't be here doing those things, so that's where that is. The next one is eliminate supervisory assistance, assign teachers to supervise. This will, in a sense, take, be a secondary focus, about $160,000. It'd be a four-para reduction, and would basically require that our secondary teachers would have one full period of prep, and they would have one supervision for the entire year period. It would just be standardized. It would just be standardized at that level. The next one is reduce high school athletic budget by $90,000. This is the same reduction that was in before. Basically, this would require us to double our high school athletic participation fee from 50 per sport to 100. And we'd co-op north and west high school sports into one team for the following. Boys' swimming, boys and girls' golf, softball, boys and girls' soccer, boys and girls' cross country and football. So there would be one Oshkosh team as opposed to a west team and a north team for those sports. Next, we have examine health plan reductions. This would be the spousal surcharge. Thank you. This would be the spousal surcharge. It is projected to save approximately $300,000. The next one is increase class size to 28 to 1. What that really means is that we will be eliminating electives such as world language, technology and engineering, business, probably agriculture, et cetera. We'll have a complete list of really what's going away because what you're going to do is you will not run any classes that might be below a certain size. And we currently do that to some degree. So you all know that we currently have a 27 to 1. So by literally going up one, it doesn't sound like a lot. But what it means is we have a lot of classes that are already running at 30, 32, 34 kids in a class. So in order to get that average to balance out, you have to get rid of those lower, slightly lower enrollment classes. They just won't run. And you will be, what happens with that is the students will end up taking whatever has seats in it for them to take as opposed to selecting. So the choice will drop quite a bit there. The next one is transition orchestra to fund 80. That would move it out of the school district and into the rec department. That is projected to save about $280,000. It would be come an after-school activity and compete with other opportunities. And the quality of the student, and student participation would drop because they wouldn't be able to participate during the school day. That is the, that's in the green zone right now. Those are the cuts that would need to be enacted in 16, 17. So that, so with a no vote on the referendum, that would be our picture for immediately for next school year. Now, for 17, 18, we'd move into the white zone, which is the next zone. First thing we would do is cut clerical staff at Central. That's projected to save about $55,000. There's a cut item on here called curb appeal, where we'd refocus the maintenance that optimizes only curb appeal and reduces in areas that are not seen. That is, in a sense, getting rid of the, a lot of the painting that we do as a district that keeps the facilities looking decent. That's projected to save about $65,000. The next one is combine two elementary schools into the middle school that's vacated that was just closed. Okay? This involves, it's about $250,000. It would involve closing neighborhood schools, potentially decreasing enrollment. District boundaries would have no bearing on where you live. You just literally would, there would be no way to do that. Because what we'd have to do is whichever middle school is closed, we'd have to pluck certain areas and probably draw them into those areas. And that would be a decision the board would have to make as to which of those two facilities would be mothballed. The other thing that's important to remember is we cannot close elementary schools because we barely have enough room right now. So the only way this one works is by filling up whatever middle school is closed with two elementary schools worth of kids. So while it's at 250,000, my guess is the cost savings will be slightly less because we'd have to retrofit whatever facility to match small children.
Plus add to transportation and buildings that may have a great majority of walkers right now.
Right, right. Yeah, because we have a lot of our neighborhood schools that have walkers and they would be bust. You'd definitely be beyond the two-mile limit. The next one is revenue. Students who are partially free and reduced would pay 50% of their fees. This is a $9,895 reduction, relatively small in the...
And that's legal.
That is legal, yes. Yep. And mind you, in there in the impact, athletic fees are already charged full. So it doesn't matter if you're free or reduced as far as athletic fees.
We do not have to, we choose as a district to waive instructional fees for free and reduced. There's no obligation by law to do that at all.
So, and that's, like I said, the smallest one on the list. Yeah? The next one is suspend the strategic compensation district point system. That's about $700,000. This will no longer be competitive with staff in comparison. As you already, you saw the comparable numbers. That would just slide us farther, farther away from that group. We're going to be recommending that this one get eliminated because you'll find it in a lower cut where you're getting rid of not only that, but you're also getting rid of the .12% CPI increase. Rather than parsing them out, we felt that those are two, that you can't do both, obviously. So if you were going to do one, it would probably be our recommendation that you would do the larger of the two.
Yeah, we also felt that if there's going to be a, maybe like a no wage for anybody, that to have a increase for one group and a no increase for other groups might be detrimental to morale. So therefore, if we're going to have any sort of, any sort of thing like a no wage increase, it would be across the board.
And that's just one minor change. Next one would be the elimination, or going to a contracted cleaning service, which would be the elimination of estimated 21 of our custodians. That'd be $420,000. Ownership, personal care and security of buildings would be diminished. I have to say, one of the things that I was pleasantly surprised at when I came to Oshkosh is they do a phenomenal job of cleaning our facilities. I mean, and we have a lot of very old buildings. And you would never know that because they are very clean and they are very well cared for. So that would be a downside of that one. We would eliminate the department chair stipend, which is about $71,000. This eliminates the department chair position in services. It eliminates a leadership position within those departments. So there just would be none of that. The next one is eliminating, this was one that was actually higher on the list and slid down. Eliminate elementary music, art and fayed by 50%. Now, what this means is that teachers would offer their own music, art and fayed for half the year, roughly. That would save us about 10 teachers, about $700,000. So in a sense, it results in elementary students receiving art, music and fayed instruction for only half the year with a specialist. The rest of the time, it would be with their classroom teacher. This significantly impacts elementary and teacher prep time and would make us an outlier among all districts in the state. The next one is eliminate math literacy intervention skills teachers. This is 11 FTE, about $880,000. Students would not receive intervention in math and reading. Teachers would be responsible for this intervention via the SLD process. This takes a great deal of supports away from our students who are having issues in terms of math and reading.
And taking away from the students who are in the regular classroom because their teacher needs to do the intervention.
Right, right. So the teacher will be stretched a couple of different ways. The next one is eliminating all professional development and instructional support, not mandated by Title I. This would, in a sense, remove all of our ISTs. So this means the media specialists would be gone. The technology coaches would be gone. The elementary and secondary reading specialists, not cut in the previous one, would be gone. This would be about 24, actually, this is a little bit more than that. We have an adjusted number of about $1.4 million that we'll be coming back with on that one. Right now, it's reported as 1.3. We adjusted those two line items to be a little bit more accurate. You'll see that on the final one. But it's a fairly large item. This means district PD and instructional supports would be eliminated. District support to classroom teachers would be eliminated. Classroom teachers would be responsible for all interventions and digital citizenship. Teachers would be responsible for scheduling, logistics and administering AP tests at the high school level. Teachers would be responsible for their own PD opportunities in terms of, the points would be gone. So they would have to figure out a way to deal with that. The curriculum and scope and sequence would be significantly compromised. There would, there would be nobody really looking in on that very carefully. Reduces educational supports necessary to implement the strategic plan. The learning without limits initiative would be unsupported. That's obviously a great concern. We'd be dropping off devices with little or no support. Innovation labs and media centers would have very limited hours because we'd be losing our media specialists.
Would we continue them, that initiative or would we just drop it? I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't drop computers and iPads into schools without any training, right?
That, that's exactly what, we had the same, we had the same response. Why would you continue putting devices in place without any support to use it?
It's a whole. You can't split that up and not, I mean, hopefully, and we don't have to do that in two years. But is it a whole package or could you keep certain things out of that? Or you're just doing it?
We've, we, the marching orders that we gave the committee was, these were viewed as total reductions. We've done the thing where we nibbled around the edges in the past. And what we find is you, that's very alluring to do because you just grab a little here, a little there, a little there. And what we are finding is that you then really, you might as well have grabbed it all because you're not really doing it. You're kind of saying you're doing it with a wink and a nod, but you're not staffing it appropriately for, you know, minimal levels. If you look at the costs that we have out there, you'll see that, you know, we certainly aren't heavy-staffed in any of these areas, including ISTs. But it is, I mean, obviously, the board has the authority to do what they want to do. But at this point, we've recommended keeping those together.
Yeah, we would not recommend that piece because it's, it is not, it would be total frustration for both the receivers of service and those who are providing the service.
The next one is cut a high school administrator. That's about $110,000 cut. That's one FTE. The high schools are already staff-lean compared to high schools in other districts. School-wide discipline issues would be less likely to be addressed. Operation and logistics of the high school would be compromised. Teacher evaluations would be significantly compromised. The next one is the one that we had referred to. There would be no wage increase and no step movement. That's about $1 million. That's a one-time solution. We would lose competitiveness with surrounding districts. The district is already in the lower quartile. Costs will increase due to turnover, so. Below that would be reduce middle school deans by 50%. That's going to be adjusted as well because remember, we cut a middle school above. So the actual savings will no longer be 2.5 FTE. It'll be, it'll be about, what did we say? Would it be about 2, 2 FTE? The next one is do not provide dental insurance to employees. That's about $1 million. That, once again, balances it on the backs of the employees. Less competitive with surrounding school districts. Staff morale would be diminished because of another takeaway. We're getting there, down to the end. Double the employee deductible. That's about half a million dollars. On January 1st, the district deductible was doubled, literally last January. We would lose competitiveness with surrounding districts. Remember, all of these, that salary and benefits number that puts us on the end, that would slide us farther away from our competitors. Costs will increase due to turnover. The next one, only allow high school students to take six credits per year. That was higher last time. That was on the previous cut list and that one has slid down quite a bit. $500,000 there places students who are on a college track at a disadvantage as they will not be able to take the number of courses they need to compete with students from other districts. Will no longer offer a comprehensive high school program. The next one was eliminate all elementary counselors. That's about eight, little over eight FTE. That's about $655,000. The classroom guidance lessons would be eliminated. Reduce support for student behavior or social, emotional, mental health needs. Added workload for principals, teachers and staff in other pupil services positions. And the last one on the list is elementary, is once again, an elimination of specialists at the elementary level, but this is a complete elimination of specialists. So there, so that number is actually going to go down because previously on the list, assuming it was cut in that order, we'd already gotten rid of half of it. So while it's up there as 1.47 million, that's because the committee was looking at that one as an isolated potential. They could have just done that single one and that would have been the value. But the sequence we will bring forward will have that adjusted to about $700,000. Once again, same, same impact. Students will not have access to specialists in these areas except they won't have access even for half the year. Teachers will not have time to prep for students. Oshkosh would be the only district in the state to have teachers doing this. Okay, now that, that's, that's the one that was rated at the bottom. Now, if you look at all of those numbers and you add them all up, it goes well beyond the reductions that we need. But a significant portion of the whitelist would have to go away in the 17, 18 school year without the successful passage of the referendum.
The compounding effect is the fact that as we look through this process to understand that if the referendum were not successfully passed, the green, first, if it's successfully passed, 100% of the green is restored and nothing else would be damaged or harmed. The reality is that the compounding effect that automatically that green would disappear and then for the following year, unless there were a successful referendum, which again is possible, but you'd still be into the issue of cutting the vast majority, nearly 85, 90% of that in the white. That's the course of action that is fully unacceptable. There's only one thing on the list that is there and that's the selling riff road and that's a one-time expense. That's an acceptable issue on behalf of what's in the best interest of the school community and the greater community. And beyond that, we are impairing and damaging significantly any ability for this district to compete with all its sister districts in the Fox River Valley all around us because right now, we have a strong, capable district delivering on community expectations. With what's in the green, we will not be. It will be a course of, it kind of reminds me of, sometimes in varying locations, as fundraisers, you put the coin in the top and you just keep watching the coin go down. That's what we would be doing to the school district. We'd be sending it down the drain. And I don't believe the community would find that acceptable. And the message that we have to communicate in all of this is that upon your final action, and we'll be prepared to deal with in the five weeks that will be after the 24th of February, the message of what direction does the greater community want to go in supporting a strong, capable community, supporting the best interest of a total community? And lastly, I think the issue of economic impact, what we'd be asking the community to do is really to invest in itself. And without investing in itself, there's the drain that will occur in having the Oshkosh community simply to be a community of industrial park for the rest of the Fox Valley is about what we'd have. And that's, that's the extent. That's frightening and it's, it's issue that, I've come to love this community and love the school district and I watch the children every day. And I, I just get tears in my eyes to think about what depriving them of the outstanding opportunities that we are providing students today would disappear is simply unacceptable. And we will be doing all in our power to communicate this message to the greater community.
There was one other comment and question that was made in the group that I think is important. One of the questions, and it's been asked here before. I think Mr. Dito had asked at one point, said, you know, well, maybe we're just a, you know, a property poor district compared to others. Maybe that's why we have to do this. We've pulled that data before and we are, we are by no means a property poor district. We have, we have the same or greater equalized value behind our kids as every other community has behind their kids. So that, that number is very clear. And of course, we're pulling that information for the referendum presentations as well so that we can say, okay, here's, here's what those numbers show. Here's what our costs are currently showing. Here's what the impact would be to keep us going. And as we, as you will hear us say many times, we can do it for less than any other district can do it, but we can't do it for no increase because no increase gets us that list, so.
And the last issue that virtually every individual owns a home or a property in the community would pay attention to is a district that would be on a downright slope like this. One can expect that property values will diminish in droves because there is no way that people want to buy homes where there aren't quality schools. And that's the nightmare, so.
Any questions that you may have us or the concerning list or anything that was on the list or the procedure? We'd be more than happy to. This was no more fun for us than it was for you listening to it. Trust us. I mean, it was, it, these are, these are the most depressing days. And fortunately, Stan always says, this is, if you're going to do it, do it in February because there's nothing really good going on in February anyways. It's already cold and dark and it feels cold and dark when you go through these lists.
Very dark and the issue of, it just fit right that we had a snowstorm in the middle of the effort, so.
Dr. Hertz, did you have a question?
Not so much a question. I just wanted to make a couple of brief observations if I could.
I just wanted to make a couple of brief observations, if I could. I too would like to thank everyone who was involved with this process. I have not served on a district-wide committee of this nature. I've served as an administrator on committees cutting, and I have never found those to be anything less than challenging and painful. And I think Mr. Martinez probably said it best. You can't help but not think about people in those roles and the children who are going to be impacted. Having said that, I just have a couple of brief observations. We've talked numerous times about encouraging innovation by our teaching staff and seeking to be a destination district. And these cuts don't seem to be in line with that. I would see, foresee us losing students to other districts and/or private schools. Secondly, a number of these speak to music teachers. In my part-time position at the university, I deal almost on a daily basis. For the last couple of weeks, it's been probably more than daily. With the, with the concept of a statewide shortage of music teachers and by eliminating the support primarily for those elementary children and their, their teachers, of music teachers, and increasing the number of sections taught by music teachers at the high school, I would be very concerned about the quality of the instruction available to all students, and that's regular ed, special ed, and everybody. A third point, I believe the correct number is Wisconsin statute 121.02 has a list of things that school districts must provide by statute. And they, one of those includes a requirement that art, music, and physical education be overseen by teachers licensed in these areas. I don't think that law would allow us to totally eliminate those, those teachers in all of those areas. What it might mean is you'd have one left in art, one in music, and one in PE.
That's what you've left in that.
Who would oversee roughly, I don't know, 200-plus elementary classrooms in the instruction. That ratio doesn't seem to me to be realistic at all. Another point is, the district recently had recommended two-year contracts for all administrators. We just voted on those at the end of January. So I'm not sure that we could eliminate any administrative positions over the next two years because we've just agreed to offer two-year contracts to all administrators. And finally, my last point is, and this was already addressed in the presentation, the impact on the strategic plan would just be horrific. And there are many, many things that go on, on a positive nature every day in the, in the classrooms of the school district. And I find it very painful watching the children pass my house on the way to Emily and Cook School and think about these cuts in relationship to, what does that mean to the quality of their education? What does that mean to the growth of this community? And what does that mean about the economic growth and development of this place we love as a place to live, learn, work, and play? So, those are my observations.
I would just comment on the fact that we fully recognize the issue of contracts, but the result of this budget reduction, we'd, we'd worry about having enough administrators to cover because people will not stay here and tolerate this.
That's a good point. And there's a shortage of administrators as well, statewide.
There is no way that individuals would tolerate that kind of action.
Other questions?
I'd like to share an observation, actually. And I want to be careful to not hijack this very important, very well-done, very cohesive discussion on an awful topic for a longstanding sort of personal agenda. But whenever I see the excellent presentation, Dr. Gendelak or the team, on our costs compared to other districts, we all have anecdotal examples of the great work being done, right? Whether it's Sound of Music or the Legalete of Facility Finance or Jose's kids going off to medical school, right? We all have these occurrences. Mr. Rowland mentioned, "Come into my class and see the great work being done." And I agree, it's been my experience. I want to turn that towards the urgency to, I think this is a conversation we can win in the public sphere through an enhanced communications effort. And I'm sorry to bring that up again, but I think the facts are the facts, the outcomes are the outcomes. We have a winning message, I guess, in this political season, right? And it's not to take away from any of our, our current communication efforts underway, but I, I want to jump out of my chair, right? I think we can, we can win the public on this. We're doing great work at a really, in a really efficient way. And so that's just sort of my, the topic I'm with, but thank you.
On the other hand, if you wanted a blueprint on how to kill a school district, we have it right here in front of us, don't we?
Yeah. School district.
Yep. And, and the nightmare we face that is fully not recognized by both community residents as well as legislators and outside is the, is the trap that our predecessors fell into in 1992, '93 on being lord because people always ask, "Well, why Oshkosh is different?" Well, because Oshkosh was very efficient in low spending in that year and for no wisdom whatsoever. But it was efficiency. They simply locked districts in where they were in that, that base year period. And that effectively, if we look around and we look at many of our sister districts, both somewhat in the area but also across the state, they, they whine and complain about their financial condition, but, but their expenditures per pupil and their choices that they can continue to make on behalf of their, of their children are totally different because their base to start from was different. And locking us into this low, low number in '92, '93 effectively sealed our fate into the future with a very unresponsive legislature.
One of the things that I have observed with the taxpayer alliance deal is that we're compared with other districts similar in terms of children, Eau Claire in particular. But one of the outliers that are indicated within that data is the difference in income within these two communities. Sure, they both have 10,000 kids roughly. But the income disparity between Oshkosh and Eau Claire is quite right. I believe it's $15,000 to $20,000 a year difference. And if you look at other districts like this, this is kind of echoing and playing off of what Stan has said here. I would be interested to see if we were that far apart in 1992 or '93 as far as income because we are feeding this monster by, it's eating itself, it's auto cannibalism. And it's going to just set there and continue to shrink. The economic drivers of having a well-educated workforce, good school districts, high property value is going to continue to sweep, to shrink. And is our wage going to continue to shrink? I might have to do some digging on that to see if '92, '93, there was that disparity between these districts. I mean, we're always comparing those, you know? How much are their educators getting compared to us? And it's a sad reality that, like he said, like James said, that this is a perfect blueprint on how to kill a, a school district.
And I think we should clarify, we're not talking about personal income, we're talking about revenue per pupil comparisons over time because that is really the major driver that's separate.
I was talking about personal income for median income for citizens of the community in Eau Claire versus Oshkosh.
Okay. Because in the base, I was, I was comparing the issue of revenue available in, in the base year or...
Right, right, understood.
The budget reconciliation team's actually brought that up as well, is, is school, the school aid formula is totally based on property wealth and none of, none of that takes into consideration personal income in a community. And they brought that up too, that, that legislatures should consider that and nothing, nothing at all in any of the aid formulas or the revenue limit, none of that takes into consideration personal income in a community.
No, it's like Monaca's got a great income level up there, you know? And so that's just the way it is.
Well, the other thing to realize too is some of it's just basic numbers. If you're locked in at a lower number and another district right next to you were locked in at a higher number and both of you are going to get the same percentage increases over time, you're just going to walk away from each other. And that's what's been happening to Oshkosh since 1993. And then, then the district kind of compounded part of it by underleaving in certain segments, which really set the stage for today. That's why we're here, is, is, because what that did is that further accelerated that, that move where we, where there's other communities that, because that's something we hear too sometimes, "Well, how come these other communities aren't having to deal with this?" The other communities are currently having, in some cases, millions of dollars more in revenue every year than we are. And, and that's why they're not having to deal with this.
And lastly, I would like to comment on the fact that it's outcomes. Every child who walks across, these two young ladies who will be walking across our stage on graduation this, this spring deserve as well as all those who follow them in future years, the right to have the same opportunity to compete for higher education and for career and experiences. And that we cannot permit our graduates to not compete on an equal par basis with all of their colleagues in the state of Wisconsin, as well as nationally and, of course, internationally. And that's the nightmare we face, is the fact that shall we, by having a less than adequate, non-comprehensive high school program, allow our students to walk across the stage? Yes, they meet the state requirements, but the preparation for them to compete on par with their colleagues as close as Winnicottany or Nina, Manasha, Appleton, Fond du Lac, even Amaral will not be the same. And why would we want to disable our next generation? Pax on us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your presentation.
Thanks, guys.
It looks like at this time, request for future agenda items. Anyone have any future agenda items? Announcements? Anyone have any announcements at this time? Hearing none. At this time, a motion would be in order to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of reviewing expulsion recommendations for expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who engaged in conduct while under the supervision of the school authority which endangered the property, health, or safety of those others. 120.13C, Wisconsin statutes. At this time, a motion would be in order for that.
So moved. Second?
Call and roll, please.
Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Hirda?
Aye.
Looks like, aye. Lundberg?
Aye.
Lundberg, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Merson, Gary?
You are in executive session.